One.
Good evening, welcome to the Kent County Public Schools Board of Education Public Budget Hearing. This hybrid meeting is being live streamed and tonight we will also have folks join us from the public during public participation. Today is April 26, 2021, and I'm calling the open session to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. The administration is recommending the approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to do so?
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. And Ms. McGee is joining us now. The agenda is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is moving into closed session. The administration is recommending approval to move into closed session to discuss personal items.
Personnel.
Before I do that, I'd like to, sorry.
Personnel.
Personnel. Yes. What did I say?
Personal.
Personal, sorry. Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Dr. Karen Calhoun, Superintendent, Mr. Ed Silver, actually, Mr. Silver not here. Gail Manley, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, will move to closed session under general provisions Article 3-305b to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
No move.
Mr. Johnson has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes. We'll move into closed session.
Good evening, I would like to reopen the April 26, 2021 Kent County Public Schools Board of Education Budget Hearing Meeting. The first item on the agenda as we open up the open session after closed session is to report on the closed session. Kent County Public Schools Board of Education members, this board, Dr. Karen Couch, the superintendent, and Gail Manley, executive assistant to the superintendent, met in closed session under general provisions Article 3-305B to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, as well as any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. This session was for information and discussion purposes only, no action was taken. Personnel actions will be voted upon by this board after the public participation portion of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask that everyone please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the budget portion of the evening, I just want to advise those that are watching the livestream. This hybrid meeting is being livestreamed to the public as well as being open to up to 20 members of the public to attend in person properly distanced. This meeting will continue to follow the Governor's executive order, which recommends following the most current guidance from the CDC and Maryland Department of Health regarding social distancing, including without limitation avoidance of larger gatherings in crowded places. If members of the public would like to submit comments into the record via email, you can submit those comments to Ms. Gail Manley during this meeting to gmanley@kent.k12.md.us. Your email submission will be read during the public participation opportunity of our meeting tonight, based on the timing of your comment submission following our superintendent's report. Members of the public will follow those emails, and those who are attending this meeting in person will be able to participate during that portion of the agenda as well, following the rules for public participation. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's FY22 budget. Dr. Couch?
Thank you, President-elect, members of the board. This is the PowerPoint, this is the final PowerPoint for the budget for FY22. This is the superintendent's budget, it was prepared by myself and also Alisa Stewart, who is our supervisor of finance. The next slide reiterates our district goals, these are the goals that are noted on our strategic plan, on the strategic plan. Goal number one is to support early learning. Goal number two is students can have equitable access to rigorous culturally relevant curriculum and instruction. Goal three is leaders, teachers, and support staff will have access to an array of professional learning. Goal four, create a safe, inclusive culture that meets the social, emotional needs of all students. Goal five, ensure that families and community partners will be informed, engaged, and supportive for students' academic success. And goal six is state-of-the-art learning spaces. Our vision is all KCPUS students will graduate equipped to achieve their highest potential, and our mission as KCPUS is an anchor organization that creates an environment of academic excellence through collaborative, equitable, and rigorous learning community. There are many items that affect the FY22 budget. The first is enrollment, as you know, enrollment affects what we receive in our funding from the county and also from the state. Our state compensatory aid and blueprint for Maryland's future funding, Kerwin, also affects our funding, budget requests, and of course salary and healthcare issues that are negotiated. Evening, President-elect, members of the board, Dr. Couch. The next page of the slide you will see is our state allocation. As you are aware, we do receive the local appropriations from the county that's based on our maintenance of effort, and then the state allocations that include foundation, GCEI, transportation. GCI is geographic cost of education index, compensatory education, limited English proficiency, special education, guaranteed tax base, supplemental grants. The last two, not the last two, but the second close to the end of the column, you'll see NTI, which is net taxable income, and TIF, which is tax increment financial adjustment. These amounts are based on Monday tax return at the September 1 and November 1. The NTI and the TIF are all utilized to assist with giving us the amount and allocation for our transportation, which is our general transportation, also taking into account to the disabled transportation. Compensatory education that includes our farm students and FEED students. The limited-edged English proficiency and special education are pertaining to the respective titles. And guaranteed tax base takes into local appropriation with the NTI and TIF. So that's how the state comes together to give us what our state allocations will be for fiscal year. And this slide here just shows you the increase and/or decrease in the state funding that we'll be receiving for each particular state allocation. Same thing with this one. And this, the slide before, just want to make mention does include the whole harmless grant that we will be receiving, which is the climate enrollment and disabled transportation, as well as the supplemental instruction for tutoring. And I want to say this year also we'll be receiving the concentration of poverty for two of our schools. Right, the concentration of poverty, based on Kerwin, is that basically notes that any school that has at least 80% farm students qualified for that. And actually, our schools are much higher. The two schools in particular are Rock Hall Elementary and Garnett Elementary. So those are the two schools that will receive concentration of poverty grants in FY22.
Did you say over 80%?
Uh huh.
Wow.
Both over 80%. Prior, they did not, but this current year, they have more than 80%, based on the numbers that I received from Judy Esseltman. You'll note that there's a slide in here that talks about Governor Hogan's companion legislation, and it was addressed in Kerwin 2.0. This notes the whole harmless grants, and it also notes in terms of what the new language states, which basically says that we will take an average of the three-year average count excluding this year's count. And that will be, this year's count will be excluded from this point moving forward. It's as if, as I stated in some of our other presentations, it's as if this year never occurred. So this year's count will be taken out of all of the rolling three-year averages from this point forward. These are the budget requests that were approved for the budget. The first one being the minimum wage. We have to begin moving up to $15 per hour, and so in order to meet what would be required in December of 2021, we will need at least another $40,000 to do that. We have in here beginning to replace some of our school furniture, $100,000. We're also going to refinish our gym floors at the elementary level, that's $18,000. Painting all of the gyms in all five schools, that would be about $15,000. Putting in place KCMS inter-scholastic sports, $18,500. Bus contractor increase based on their contract is $11,000. And a 2% salary increase, which is a required state increase for our nursing staff, $8,340. You'll also see that we have money in here for the Kent Blended Learning Academy, the KBLA, of $15,000. .5 Secretary for Transportation, $15,000. Fuel, bus fuel increase of $5,000. Bus maintenance, $25,000. Food service support supervision, $16,000, which will be taken out of the fund balance for food service. 3.5 teachers for block scheduling at the high school, and one trainer for the high school. All of that totals up to $608,340. The next slide talks about all of the salary increases and healthcare increases as per the negotiated contract. $585,278 for salary increase. Healthcare increase, $184,061. And the increase with fixed charges, $174,658, totaling compensation package of $943,997. So this slide here shows you the increase in funding that we'll be receiving from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 2022. As you will notice, the appropriation that you would see for local from the county that will be received based on maintenance of effort is $463,999. And in the state revenue portion, this goes back to the prior PowerPoint slide that actually shows the state allocation, which demonstrates the increases and the decreases accordingly. And also the highlighted blue additional blueprint for Maryland's future grant that we will be receiving due to being hold harmless. You will also see in the other revenue category our amount of increase from fiscal year 21 to 22 in our fund balance, which was $858,964, for a total increase in revenue of $1,706,976. So as you look on this slide, you see that the increase is to 1.7. The amount that is needed for fiscal year 2021 in order to proceed with our budget and proceed with operations is $1,552,337, for a budget surplus of $154,639. And please note that this budget surplus cuts a lot into our fund balance. So technically, the surplus is what's remaining that we've been from the increase of our fund balance.
But we still have the $500,000?
Yes, okay. And this just gives you a snapshot of our budget analysis that shows you the total increase in revenues and the total increase in expenditures as Dr. Couch pointed out in the prior PowerPoint. And then it lets you know that the surplus is $154,639. That concludes the budget as what will be requested from the county commissioners. The next item is also our capital request. We're asking for money to replace the roof at Kent County High School. And that is an overview of what we would expect to receive from the state and also from the local. But I think this is the page that would be the most important with regard to looking at what could be required of FY22, FY23, and FY24. The total amount for the county would be $3,803,400. And then also repeating the central office parking lot is $80,000 for FY22, $61,000 for FY22, for a total of what we're requesting for capital in FY22 of $141,000. But overall, to replace the roof, it would be $3,803,000. These are numbers that I've already provided to the county so that they can prepare that in their budget as well.
So the roof will be paid?
Yes. The roof is so large, it will not be able to be done all in one summer. And then we have to go before the state and request funds. So the $61,000 is what we would have to have advanced for A&E, which is the architectural and engineering costs.
Do you anticipate construction starting next summer?
Yes.
How far back on the list is the track at the high school?
The track is already being put out to bid right now. We expect to get it done this summer.
Okay. The reason I ask is, actually, a couple of track coaches approached me and wondered how wide of an investment it would be considering that we have a very small earn-out. We have been for track for the last couple of years, so, I don't know, just throwing that out there.
Well, it's money, all of it's being paid for by the state.
Really?
We're not putting any of our own money into that project.
I'm going to throw away money somebody's going to give us.
Yeah, that was money that I requested from the legislators, and I went and presented at the state, and that was money that we received from the state.
So when?
Completely 100% funded by the state.
And I do remember that now. When do we anticipate that work would begin?
I think Mr. Kirby was saying that the work would probably begin sometime in June.
Oh, really? So it would be ready for the fall?
Yeah. There would be some preliminary work done in June, and then full-scale push ahead in July. That concludes the presentation of my budget.
Are there any questions on the budget?
I just have a question about the salary increase. Are, is that still a placeholder, or do we?
As we watch later.
So we've, other than putting pen to paper, the negotiations have been finalized?
Negotiations have been completed, and the administrators, A&amp;S, has already ratified their contract. We're waiting for the other two.
Okay, thank you.
And the change in the number of teachers needed for the block schedules, are you feeling confident that is closer to the reality than what we had?
I mean, at this point, right, the students are right now choosing their classes, so we won't know for sure, but they're feeling fairly confident that it can be done with the three and a half.
I would say from the presentation standpoint, the summary page, I think that was a nice, touch on that short. It was just easier to read.
Yeah.
What do you plan to do to accomplish this?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, 2:30.
Actually, I do have another question about the athletic trainer. I've heard through certain avenues that, I don't know if that $75,000 would also include a Gator or some sort of transportation for the trainer to get around campus?
No, that's purely salary, and that's salary and benefits. So, well, when we get to the discussion of the trainer, I'll bring up that.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Solomon, if you have a question?
Just that tomorrow is the first preliminary meeting with the county commissioners. They are supposed to vote on anything or whatever.
I, I, I think it's just a work session, so I don't think that they're voting on anything. At this point, it's just a presentation.
Any further comments or questions from board members regarding the budget presentation? Okay. That was for information only. So the next item on the agenda is public participation. Ms. Manley, I'll open up, do we have anything electronically? We do not? Do we have any in-person? Okay. I'll just make a comment, it is nice to see other faces in the room other than just, no offense to everyone. Thanks. Okay, great. So let's move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is personnel. This is an action item. The administration is recommending approval of these stated personnel actions as was presented during closed session. Do we have a motion to approve those recommendations?
I move that we approve personnel actions that were presented in closed session.
Mr. Johnson has the motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Sullivan has the second. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I didn't hear ayes down. Do you guys?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Opposed? No opposition, the motion passes as presented. Thank you.
Okay, I want to take this opportunity to introduce two individuals. The first being Joe Graff, who will be the new high school principal. He's in the audience with his family, I think.
Hi, guys, welcome.
Thank you.
And then also Dan Hudson, who will be the new supervisor for HR.
Dan Hudson, congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Adam.
Very good. Thanks for coming tonight. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the revised FY twenty-one graduation.
No, it's actually athletic trainer.
I'm sorry. Athletic trainer.
Okay.
It's highlighted, don't worry.
I know. Okay. So I know we were gonna talk about what we were going to do to, to round out the, the school year with the discussion of athletic trainer. And I was, I had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Taylor about this item. And I know the unfortunate situation that occurred with your son was because we do pay for EMT and also trainers to be on-site for the games. But we did not have, and usually it's a shared, a shared responsibility between the EMT that we have on staff, or at least that we pay to be on staff, and also the athletic trainer from Washington College. However, Washington College has been unable to recruit a trainer because of COVID and those kinds of things. We, since then, the, Washington College has, has hired a trainer. That person has cleared our, our processes and is ready to go. So Mr. Taylor wanted me to inform the board that he feels confident that between the EMT and the trainer from Washington College, we can round out the rest of the year with the games and have them covered by either the EMT or the trainer from Washington College.
So that's just games, not practices?
Games.
Okay.
Games only. So there's that. So I'll, I'll stand for questions as far as that goes, and then we can talk about what you brought up earlier.
So we intend to continue the relationship with Washington, Washington College even when we have a trainer on staff?
I mean, we, we, I, I think that's something that we'll have to discuss. I don't know. I'm certain that if we need their help, they're, they're able to help us. They've talked with Mr. Taylor about a partnership in terms of utilizing their, their position on staff that we can use also with our trainers as well. So I think that that is gonna require a conversation once we hire the trainer and then make a determination how we move forward and, and solidify that partnership with Washington College.
And I'm thinking too about if we are starting an athletic trainer in the middle school, having that resource nearby would be good.
Yeah, probably that would be helpful for the middle school, but I think that the trainer at the high school is gonna be pretty busy just managing the high school athletics. So I don't see that they're gonna be able to be shared with the middle school. I don't see that happening. I could be wrong, but I just don't see that happening.
That's how we do things today, to keep, keep a relationship with Washington College.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah. Oh, just, I'd heard that, that maybe we would be trying to find room in the budget for transportation for a trainer to get around campus.
Right, well, there, we're gonna need to think about a budget for the trainer anyways because we're gonna have to purchase equipment. I know that Mr. Graff has already provided me with some information about his, his wife was trainer in Cecil County. So she has a bunch of, she had a bunch of information about what was needed to, you know, to outfit a trainer's room. So I got that information, I shared that with Mr. Taylor. And we're already looking into what, what the budget needs to be for that. And then Mr. Taylor also talked to me about purchasing a gator so that the trainer could, you know, make it from one sport to another. So I don't know, you know, where we're going to land with the budget, but we need to look forward in terms of when we hire the trainer, where their, you know, what their salary is gonna be, and then, you know, what monies we can allocate for the, the trainer. I mean, obviously, we can't just hire a trainer and not have equipment. So we need to consider what that budget needs to be and then make sure we put that in the budget as well.
Do you think there might be a possibility to reach out to John Deere dealership and work out a deal?
That's what Mr. Taylor said.
The way we have with our Teacher of the Year getting a vehicle?
Right, well, I don't, you know, I don't know that they'll give us something.
No, but I'm just saying that that would certainly be good press for them.
Right.
And that's a way to, an in-kind donation without necessarily handing over free stuff.
Well, one of the good news is we have some money in the budget right now that we set aside for paying the EMT and the trainer from Washington College, which we won't need if we have our own trainer that we've already allocated in this budget. So that would give us some additional dollars that could be utilized for equipment and materials. So I'm waiting for Mr. Taylor to get back with me with regard to what, you know, the, the amount we need to set aside for the materials and supplies that we would need to outfit the trainer's room. And then we'll see where we land. We'll also engage in those conversations and see if we can get a good deal in terms of transportation for the, for the trainer. Because I agree, I mean, it's gonna be really hard to go back and forth games if you don't have adequate transportation.
And getting there quickly.
Yeah, getting there quickly, especially if there's an injury. Absolutely.
And so the, 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 for the, the remaining year this year, is that this person would be available for all of his sports in the afternoon and bounce back? Whatever, whatever the date looks like, if there's multiple games or one game, there'll be a trainer there?
There'll be, or an EMT.
Or an EMT, yeah, I'm sorry, but just someone that has that, okay.
But the, but the full-time trainer wouldn't start until?
Next year.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. You know, let's say that, you know, the, the budget goes through and we're able to approve that, when would, I guess Mr. Taylor will be the person that maybe do the interviews or do the, and when would we start advertising and looking for that person? Because it's like hiring a teacher too, you don't wanna be the last person in.
Well, I think as soon as we get approval for our budget.
Okay.
And as soon as that happens, then we can start advertising. I know that Mr. Taylor was saying that there's certain places that would be the best place to advertise for a trainer. And according to Washington College, this is a good time to be looking at hiring somebody.
Good.
Any additional questions on the KCHS athletic trainer? Hearing none?
Oh, please. Just curious about for next year, this would, this be a, so an eleven, eleven-month position? Have you been about summer, summer sports, uh, fall sports starting before the school year?
You know, I, I think that's gonna have to be something we, we work out in terms of typically, it's not a summer position. I mean, it's, it might be ten and a half months, but I don't know that it would be eleven months.
And I know a lot of the college trainers, like at Washington College, for example, they're on contract for the school year and then they work summer camps and other things. So they're able to supplement their income in another way. It's not a good round job for anybody.
Right.
Any additional questions?
This is kind of new territory for us, so we're gonna have to move cautiously and see what works out best. Oh, here comes. Oops, I think her item is next and she just left.
Okay.
Um, you just bear with it, just to be sure. Does anybody have any more questions about the trainer? I know in my previous school system, we only had our trainers on staff for ten and a half months. And then you're right, if we needed them extra, we can always pay for them extra in terms of, and sometimes if there were camps that were put together by some of the other sports, they, they would fundraise and pay for the trainer to, to be present at some of their camps and whatnot.
When I was talking about more, it wasn't necessarily the trainer working camps at Kent County High School, but the trainer working camps at other colleges, uh, things like that, that, you know, like Washington College's Minus McCross coach has a summer camp for a couple of weeks, and usually one of the trainers works, works that camp.
Right. Okay, well, I guess we should just move on. I hate to tie everybody up.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the revised FY twenty-one graduation date. Here she comes, Dr. Couch.
Okay. Um, Ms. Manley? The present guest, four members, Dr. Couch.
Good evening.
Um, purpose of, of my, purpose of this memo tonight is actually twofold. Not just one, one, I would just go, just go the one. Yes. Okay, so proposal is for a short-term waiver request for the class of two thousand twenty-one graduation date. I came to you a few weeks ago with this information and since have had a chance to survey our parents, our students, and our staff members. And just very quickly, seventy-five percent of our parents, eighty-five percent of our seniors, and one hundred percent of our staff members are in favor of changing the date of graduation from Saturday, Saturday, June fifth, to Friday, June fourth. We, in order to get the responses, we sent out multiple email notifications, it was on the school app, and there was a real book called them. I'm sorry. It's okay. So, I mean, I, I think for us, I mean, some of the, some of the items we mentioned last time in terms of just convenience of raining dates, starting before the, the heat of the day, the, the quality of the live streaming and the video, but really for our staff, the big piece was in order to have, you know, all of our staff members there to be able to provide some of the safety protocols that we believe we need to put in place. Due to the fact that we're gonna have several hundred people in attendance, we believe we're gonna need all man, all, all hands on deck. So this is actually an, an item for action tonight. And this way, this will allow me to go ahead and notify our parents in a timely manner.
Dan, up there. I, I, more like a, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off with one.
That's okay.
So I understand the move for Friday, so are we saying there will be no school for the rest of the students on that Friday?
Well, it is, it's a virtual day for our students, so they would still be doing their, I mean, they're, they're joining in the morning for an assignment, and then they have their small group sessions. So what I was, so yes, what I'm saying is, yes, they would still be doing their potential morning meeting, morning assignments, but the small group activities would not take place. But they're not on campus that day?
And what about the, the siblings that are in other schools that would want to attend the ceremony? How does that work?
Right, very similar to what happens when we have fifth grade promotion and eighth grade promotion. It happens all of the time to our high school students. They, simply we get a, a, an absentee request and it's, it's, it's cute that.
And for the, the people who said that they weren't in favor of the date change, do you guess, uh, do you think that was an employment issue or?
Um, I think, so when you look at that twenty-five percent, it was seventeen responses. So it was just a matter of, I've already ordered graduation announcements, or, you know, we, we potentially may have some family coming in. But I think what people are not realizing is that they're gonna have so few tickets, you're not gonna be able to bring the amount of people that we typically bring to a graduation. And we are gonna be live streaming again, so.
And how long do you anticipate that event will be, from ten AM to?
I think we can be done within, well, a normal graduation is about two hours. We know that we need to try to cut that down by half. So we're gonna be really moving through the ceremony. We're cutting out the guest speaker, which many times, that's an unpredictable amount of time, could be anywhere from twenty minutes to three, forty-five minutes sometimes. Right? Yep.
Any other questions regarding graduation?
Is there an opportunity to speak with all the students? I know that you've only gotten responses from, from sixty-six responses out of, you said there's?
About a hundred forty-seven.
About a hundred. Like, is there still time to check in with all of them?
Um, yeah, we're, we're gonna have a class meeting next week. But honestly, I really don't wanna wait that long. We're already pushing, you know, to about four, or about week. We have to make a decision.
Any comments, questions? Okay, Ms. Williams, you, you did mention this was an action item. So the administration is recommending a short-term waiver to board policy IKFB to revise graduation date for the class of fiscal year, of year, FY twenty-twenty-one, from Saturday, June fifth to Friday, June fourth. Do we have a motion to do so?
I move that we approve the short-term waiver to board policy IKFB to revise graduation date. FY, who's going on from Saturday, June fifth to Friday, June fourth?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Ms. McGee. Any comments, questions?
I'll just say that I think it's, it's a, a, a good thing that the, the faculty is a hundred percent behind that. And I'm, and there, for, there are certain reasons why they're probably gonna be on the, at the high school that day. But I'm happy for our seniors that all, that everybody will be there to see them, because I, I understand their conflicts on a Saturday when there's graduation, but I've always been sort of disappointed for the seniors when all the staff isn't there. So this will make up a little bit for them, so I'm happy about that.
And, um, and, well, go ahead, give it to us, and I'll think.
If you wanna tell me?
No, I was gonna say, and, and we'll be looking at making some adjustments to the, to the policy moving forward, but for, for tonight, this is what we're bringing forward.
Any additional comments? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Um.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you, Ms. Williams.
It was hard for all your work with that.
The next item on the agenda is the notification of the next meeting. The next meeting of the Board of Education of Kent County Public Schools. This board will be held on May 10th, 2021, beginning at 5:30 p.m. with the open session. Open session will be immediately followed by the board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at 6:30 p.m. This meeting will be located here, the administrative building, in the boardroom, this room at 5608 Foundry Avenue, Rock Hall, Maryland 21661. The last item on the agenda is to adjourn. The administration is recommending to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
Are we, from this point forward, allowing 20 participants in person at board meetings? Or was that just for this budget here?
I mean, we haven't discussed, I don't see why not. It's working, so let's continue. Maybe we can talk, and it's not an action item, but I think it makes a lot of sense. Yeah, it's working. Okay. So the last item on the agenda is to adjourn. Do we have a motion to do so? The motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments, desire to stay longer? No?
Good to be depressed and everyone here.
We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.